Morning, everyone. We're convening the Committee on Labor and Government Operations. It is Wednesday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, nine thirty a.m. in Conference Room three zero nine.
Recording in progress.
I don't know if I'm supposed to wait for that or not. Do I, do I need to say everything again?
Tell me.
Okay. Anyway, we have one bill on the agenda today. It's HB five one one, or five five one. I'm sure you all know what it is relating to health. So in order to allow as many people to testify, it's possible there will be a two-minute time limit per testifier, although I'll let you summarize your testimony if you are running long. Because morning hearings must adjourn prior to the noon floor session, not all testifiers may have the opportunity to testify. In that event, please know that your written testimony will be considered by the committee. Please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify on Zoom and also after your testimony is complete. The Zoom chat function will allow you to chat with the technical staff only. Please use the chat only for technical issues. If you are disconnected unexpectedly from Zoom, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting. If disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if time permits. Please note the House is not responsible for any bad internet connection on the testifiers' end. In the event of a network failure, it may be necessary to reschedule the hearing or schedule a meeting for decision-making. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images, or I might add any offensive images. Please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. All right, we do have a number of testifiers today, and I set this committee, this bill, separate for that reason. First up, we have the Department of Health in support.
Good morning, Chair Montiyoshi and Vice Chair Takuya Garrett, and thank you, members of the committee, for hearing this bill. I'm Lola Irvin, representing Dr. Kenny Fink, the Director of Health, and we are in strong support of this bill. And so we just really thank Chair Montiyoshi and the members of the Keke Caucus for bringing this bill forward. The Department of Health is willing to take on the role of administering the requirements in this bill, should it pass, and we hope it does. We note that the Federal Trade Commission, in our testimony, published a report late in two thousand and twenty-two, that from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, the nicotine content and the disposable pods that became very popular with our youth, that are flavored, the nicotine content increased by sixty percent. And so we thank you so much for providing a protection that does not exist to prohibit flavored tobacco products from being sold in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Attorney Generals in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Chelsea Okamoto. I am a deputy attorney general with the Tobacco Enforcement Unit. Our department is in strong support of this bill, and we thank the Chair and the committee for hearing this bill to address the youth vaping epidemic, and thank you for your commitment to the health of Hawaii's youth. We're available for questions.
Thank you. Next up, Department of Education in support.
Good morning, Chair Montiyoshi and Vice Chair Garrett, and members of the committee. Any colonists who pretend to be officers of the Department of Education who stand on our written testimony in support.
Okay, and testifiers, if you don't mind coming up to the mic, just so the Zoom people can hear you too, but for the record, they're standing on their testimony in support. Next up, University of Hawaii in support. University of Hawaii. Gosh, it's like yesterday's hearing. Next up, we have members of the University of Hawaii Student Health Advisory Council in support.
Good morning. My name is Lisa, and I'm here on behalf of the Student Health Advisory Council at UH. I am also a graduate student studying social work, specifically behavioral mental health, and I'm also a physical therapist, and I work with many adolescent and young adult athletes. And in my work as a graduate student, I have recently co-authored and published a qualitative research study on the UH campus focused on vape product use and looking to answer the question of why students vape and what they perceive are barriers to cessation. Our study found that flavors, including menthol, are one of the most common reasons that students start vaping and one of the most common barriers to wanting to quit. So I'm personally dedicated to the ban of flavored vape products because through my work as a physical therapist, I've also seen the damage that vape products have on young adults physically, mentally, and emotionally. Especially now, isolation during the pandemic has put the health of our Keke at greater risk, and we're at a pivotal time right now to help prioritize adolescent and young adult physical and mental health. So please consider this testimony in support of Bill HB five five one in order to ban the sale of flavored vape products here in Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii COPD Coalition in support. Valerie Chang.
Not present.
Okay, not present. Next up, we have Aloha Petroleum, Minute Stop, and Par Hawaii in opposition.
All right, good morning, Chair Montiyoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, and members of the committee. Meion Mo here on behalf of Aloha Petroleum, Minute Stop, and Par Hawaii. We're in opposition to this measure. However, we do ask that the committee consider that the FDA is currently drafting final rules. They are committed to bringing some of the rulemaking at the end of this year, so we're hopeful that from a consistency standpoint across all the states, that the committee consider awaiting the final draft rules coming out of the FDA. Available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to recall University of Hawaii on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Paulo Pocrell, researcher of the University of Hawaii Cancer Center and in support of the bill. I do research on electronic cigarettes and tobacco product use among youths and young adults in Hawaii. I stand by my written testimony and would be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii Public Health Institute in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Peggy Mirzou with the Hawaii Public Health Institute. We stand in strong support of this measure that will end the sale of flavored tobacco, including menthol. It's one of the five Keke Caucus bills this year and a policy that our youth council has been working, has been supporting for five years. Tobacco use remains a public health crisis. Every year, fourteen hundred people in Hawaii die from tobacco-related diseases, and the annual cost of the state continues to rise. Currently, we're spending about five hundred and twenty-six million in healthcare costs a year due to tobacco use. We can address this crisis through a comprehensive approach, and that includes ending the sale of flavored tobacco products. In a poll of registered voters conducted by Ward Research in December two thousand and twenty-two, ninety-five percent of respondents believe that the use of e-cigarettes or vaping devices is harmful to our children, teens, and families. Ninety-two percent felt the use of e-cigarettes among school-aged children is a problem, and eighty percent would support a law that would end the sale of flavored tobacco products. It's past time for the state to address the issue. These products are targeted at young people with enticing flavors and packaging that's decorated with familiar candies, ice cream products, cartoon characters, and sugary drinks. Not only are these products targeted at children, they don't help people in any way. They are not FDA-approved cessation products, and they are certainly not low-risk alternatives. In fact, five states and an additional one hundred and seventy municipalities have ended the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol. The tobacco companies use predatory marketing to hook our youth, and they will continue to fund campaigns, target our youth, and lobby for their products to stay on the market. They need to create lifelong nicotine addicts to ensure lifelong customers, and we need to take decisive action and end the sale of all flavored tobacco products by passing HB five fifty-one. Thanks so much. We'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. Next up, we have HSTA in support.
Aloha, Chairs and Member Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Osa Tuwi Jr., President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The association supports this bill, and we sent on our written testimony on, and I want to make some critical points here. We do have a major crisis in our public schools. We have students in elementary, middle school vaping, and when they get to high school, they're already addicts. What is it like in the classroom for we, classroom teachers? Students are very disruptive, impulsive, they leave classes anytime, they just get up and walk out. They're not performing, they are failing, they are becoming dropouts. And what's the impact here? The impact is schools are labeled not doing well. Our students are not doing well. Hawaii gets labeled as schools that are not performing. Why are not performing? Our students are not healthy. That is why they're not performing. We are going to continue allowing the tobacco industry to profit in the billions here in Hawaii while the long-term health, safety, lives, and education of our future generation are being impacted. We want our children to become productive, healthy citizens for Hawaiianay. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your testimony. Next up, we have American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network in support.
Thank you, Chair Montiyoshi, Vice Chair Andrew Garrett. My name is Cynthia Au. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, and we just are in strong support of this bill. The lung cancer remains the leading cause of cancer deaths in Hawaii, with an estimated fourteen hundred adults dying from smoking every year or using tobacco products every year. There are twenty-one thousand Keke who are alive now that will die prematurely due to smoking-related diseases. We just want to commend the committee for considering a bill that will end the sale of all flavored tobacco products, including menthol flavors, and we just hope that the House can remain strong in having that stance throughout this session. Thank you so much, and we do have some recommendations in the bill, I mean in our, in our testimony for your review. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Coalition for Tobacco-Free Hawaii Youth Council in support.
Representative Scott C. Matayoshi, Chair Representative Andrew Takuya Garrett, Vice Chair, and members of the Committee on Labor and Government Operations. My name is Christine Nguyen, and I am testifying on behalf of the Coalition for Tobacco-Free Hawaiians, CTFH Youth Council, in strong support of HB five five one. The CTFH Youth Council is a nationally recognized group of youth leaders fighting for the health of our own generation against the powerful influences of big tobacco. The Youth Council consists of students from middle, high school, and college across all the counties. In two thousand and nineteen, the most recent data from Hawaii available, one in three high school students and one in five middle school students report current use of e-cigarettes. As many know, these products are harmful to youth, in particular containing toxic chemicals like nicotine, formaldehyde, that negatively impact the developing brain. In fact, over twenty-one thousand Hawaii youth alive today will die from tobacco-related illness if smoking rates don't change. That's one thousand four hundred people every year that die from a tobacco-related illness. To put that into perspective, COVID has killed a thousand seven hundred and fifty-two people over the past three years. We rightfully took the extreme steps to prevent additional deaths, and we are asking for a similar sense of urgency for those one thousand four hundred people dying from tobacco-related deaths every year. Our Youth Council believes that ending the sale of flavored tobacco products is one of the way to reduce these preventable deaths. Eighty-one percent of youth who have ever used tobacco started with a flavored product, while ninety-seven percent of youth who have vaped say that they use a flavored product. It comes as no surprise, over the past several years, the market for flavored tobacco products has exploded, with over fifteen thousand five hundred being mostly candy and fruity flavors. The industry has taken to weaponizing our local food and cultures as well, with flavors like Pog, Fruit Punch, and Lali Koilichi. It's hard to imagine that they're not targeting kids. Menthol in particular is one of the most popular flavors amongst teens, using names like Ice and Chill to describe the cooling sensation that couples with its minty taste. Menthol makes it easier to start vaping and harder to quit. Menthol, however, is the primary product used in predatory marketing against youth and vulnerable communities. The industry considers Hawaii a menthol state, with seventy-eight percent of native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander smokers using menthol cigarettes, perpetuating a legacy of public health disparities and corporate exploitation. Banning the sale of all flavored tobacco products would work to end this deadly cycle of addiction and manipulation, and doing so retailers would no longer have the ability to sell products that would have been the primary catalyst for addicting a new generation of people.
Okay, that, that's been two minutes. If you could summarize the rest of your testimony, please.
Okay. We strongly ask that you consider looking at the rest of our written testimony for examples, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have the Hawaii State Youth Commission in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Jun Shin, and I am speaking today on behalf of the Hawaii State Youth Commission and our Public Health Legislative Committee. Our commission is in strong support of House Bill five five one. As representatives of the youth of Hawaii, the commission is committed to promoting inclusivity, opportunity, and progress here in Hawaii. This includes the health of Hawaii's youth. That is why the commission strongly supports this measure because its efforts to end the sale and mislabeling of flavored tobacco products is crucial to improving the health and lives of not only our youth, but also the communities that they live in, which are negatively affected by tobacco and vape. Currently, one in five middle schoolers from, and one in three high schoolers use e-cigarettes. Eighty-one percent started out with a flavored product. Additionally, ninety-seven percent of youth who currently vape use flavored products. This is because there are over fifteen thousand flavors of vape that are constantly being marketed to target, entice, and hook our youth population. These flavors are the reasons why, as the previous speaker highlighted, twenty-one percent of Hawaii's youth who are alive today will ultimately die from a tobacco-related illness if rates don't change. So we must acknowledge that flavored tobacco products are a severe threat to the health of our youth, and ending sales of flavored products is a critical and necessary step toward a better future. So the Hawaii State Youth Commission urges the committee to pass this bill so we can prevent the dangers of tobacco from affecting our present and future generations of our Keke. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the R Street Institute in opposition.
Chairman Matayoshi, Vice Chairman Garrett, and members of the committee. My name is Mazen Saleh, and I am the Harm Reduction Policy Director for the R Street Institute, which is a nonprofit, nonpartisan policy research organization, and we promote free markets and limited effective government at both federal and state levels. We've long held concerns with the effects of cigarette smoking and inefficiencies in current tobacco control and the youth use of tobacco products, and as such, we staunchly supported raising the federal minimum age to purchase tobacco to twenty-one back in December two thousand and nineteen. Given this bill also restricts flavored tobacco for adults trying to quit cigarettes, we oppose it in its current form. Our organization believes in the science and the promise of tobacco harm reduction. Harm reduction is not a foreign concept in the Aloha State as a Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in Honolulu operates a syringe exchange program for people who use drugs. The goal of harm reduction for tobacco use is one in the same, to reduce harms for those who cannot or will not abstain from participation in risky behaviors. While no tobacco product is without risk, non-combustible products like e-cigarettes are drastically less harmful alternatives. This view is shared by the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine, the FDA, the Royal Colleges of Physicians, and even Public Health England. In a study of over forty-five hundred former and current smokers who used e-cigarettes, restricting flavor varieties led to an increase in cravings for combustible cigarettes for forty-eight point five percent of former smokers. Of the participants, another thirty-nine percent reported that limiting flavors would have discouraged them from terminating their smoking habit. You see, flavors can help break smokers' conditioned response to tobacco. Adult smokers may initially use tobacco flavors to mimic traditional cigarettes, but they often switch to other flavors once they've broken that association. While the measures aim is to deter youth vaping, it's already illegal for those under twenty-one to purchase tobacco in the Aloha State. Instead, the focus should be on strengthening enforcement, not severely restricting less harmful products for adult smokers. There are roughly a hundred and sixty-seven thousand cigarette smokers in the Aloha State who need less harmful alternatives to cigarettes, but unfortunately, this measure leaves them with dwindling options. For these reasons, we strongly encourage you to oppose this legislation. Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Tobacco-Free Kids Action Fund in support.
Wasn't sure I was going to be able to be here in person. So, nice to see you, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. Liza Ryan Gill with Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids Action Fund. I just wanted to address some of the things since you have our written testimony, and we've been here a few years now. So one of, one of the testifiers in opposition mentioned that the FDA, we should wait for the FDA to speak on this issue. Many of the products that we're seeing getting confiscated from kids in our middle schools and high schools are actually not allowed to be sold. What exemptions and confusion have done is make sure that our vendors and people who would maybe make the right action just don't know, because is this product equivalent? Is this one exempt? It's really difficult to make that distinction. Sorry, I can't get a lot of breath. And, and what we've seen as a nationwide organization as well is that even in California, where many of the, where all flavored products just came off the shelves recently, is that vendors even before then went to stores and said, hey, I have this letter from the FDA that was falsified. And so this is the importance of a comprehensive bill, is that we know that the tobacco industry has a lot more money than us, and every day they can keep products on the shelf is more money that they make. And so when, if we don't set comprehensive legislation and address these issues, they will continue to find loopholes and exploit them. And when I started working on this issue in two thousand and nineteen, the products that we saw being confiscated were totally different than what we see right now, because kids switch immediately if there is an equivalent product at a similar price point that they can get their hands on. So this is why we need to think about it, not just from the perspective of like, what's a good compromise, but also what are the tactics that are being used across the country to get around these, to exploit loopholes as they're being created? So, thank you. I'm glad I could be here in person, and look forward to seeing this measure move forward.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have American Heart Association in support.
Good, good morning, Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, and members of the committee. Thank you all for being here this morning. American Heart Association also supports this, this bill. A lot of my testimony you have in front of you has been spoken to already, but I want to point out a few other key points. I want to reiterate that although e-cigarettes have been marketed as safe or safer by the tobacco industry, that's a fallacy. They are not safe. To say that they're safer, it's like comparing jumping off of a hundred-story building to jumping off a ninety-story building. From a cardiovascular disease standpoint, the, the amount of research that's now mounting shows that e-cigarettes are at least as dangerous to use from a cardiovascular standpoint. That's heart disease and stroke, which are the number one and three causes of death in our state, leading cause of major disability. From the cardiovascular disease standpoint, these are at least as dangerous, if not more dangerous. They, they cause a lot of the same problems as traditional cigarettes, sometimes in different ways, but the end result is the same. ways, but the end result is the same. The leading, I mean tobacco is the leading preventable cause of risk from cardiovascular disease standpoint. I want to reiterate also that, you know, to say that the FDA should take action on this, the FDA has been trying to take action for years. Ten years ago, they enacted a policy to eliminate warning labels from cigarettes. In those 10 years, the tobacco industry has tied that up in the court system. There's no reason to think they won't do the same with this. They already have lawsuits against some of the FDA's proposed policies on e-cigarettes. They're just trying to delay and continue to profit off the health of our kids. And so I just want to say, you know, it's time for our state to take action on this. The problem is, we have one of the worst problems in the country as far as our kids using flavored tobacco products and e-cigarettes, and if we don't take action, it's just going to get worse. So I encourage you to please support this bill. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, we have Retail Merchants of Hawaii in opposition.
Aloha and good morning. I'm Tina Yamaki with the Retail Merchants of Hawaii. We are in opposition to this bill. It is our understanding that all e-liquids have to be flavored. Because of the way that they're made, they are tasteless to begin with, and that's why flavor is added to the base. And this bill would essentially ban all e-liquids and flavored tobacco products, and it will compel people to purchase these items online or on the black market. Bans are not the answer. Here in Hawaii, we have a lot of military bases here. People have friends, family, everybody knows everybody, so that's where they're going to be purchasing it. Or they're going to be purchasing it off the black market, which we're seeing right now as well. If it is to deter underage use, this bill's not going to do that. They're still going to get it from the black market. They don't buy it from our retailers. They have their friends and family come in and buy it for them. Once that product leaves the store, we don't know what happens to it, and they give it to their underage kids or their friends. If they come into the store with the kid and ask them, which one do you want? Retailers don't sell it. They tell them, thank you, but you have to leave. So we are being very proactive in this. Yes, there are a few bad eggs, but that's like that in every industry and even in government. So we realize that, but for the majority of us retailers, we are taking action. We also found out that electronic vaping devices are nearly twice as effective as conventional nicotine replacement products, patches like gum, and used for quitting smoking. So again, I'd like to reiterate that bans are not the answer. The thing, if you're trying to get rid of underage vaping, we have to go after those people who are buying it for the kids, and those kids who are actually vaping themselves. There's no penalty really right now. The penalty is so low. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Branson Hatakenaka in support.
Hello Chair Matayoshi, and the rest of the Committee on Labor and Government. Thank you for allowing this opportunity to testify. My name is Branson Hatakenaka. I'm a junior from Heeol High School, testifying in support of HB 551. I stand by my written testimony, but I'd like to make a few other remarks that I feel are important. This bill is one that I and many other committee members strongly feel is long overdue. This is a bill whose continual delay has allowed for the proliferation and normalization of vaping among youth. As a result, it's become the case that no matter where you go, students will tell you how normal it is to see groups of students huddled around and passing vapes to each other. This is despite laws banning the use of such products under 21, because corporations are still allowed to conduct predatory marketing towards youth, and the ease of which they can be obtained by an older friend or family. This isn't an issue of enforcement, but the overwhelming ease of which youth can obtain such products. And it's a matter of normalizing the practice of corporations trapping youth in addiction and making profits off their deteriorating health. Actions such as this bill well-intact businesses, but when those profits are coming at the expense of the health and livelihoods of our youth, who are the future of Hawaii, we must take a stand. We can and should work together with businesses to ensure that they stay afloat, but we will not and cannot compromise over flavored menthol and misleading tobacco products for the health of our youth. And while I'm not naive enough to believe that this will completely end vaping among youth, it is the obvious first step of many we must take to protect our youth. This is why I and many other students, family, and community members are testifying in strong support of HB 551, and why this bill should have the unified support of legislators to end the corrupting influence of vaping companies on our youth. Thank you for this invaluable opportunity to testify in support of this bill, and for the chance to help protect my peers and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Americans for Tax Reform in opposition. We can't hear you. Your audio is not coming through.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can.
Sorry, my apologies for that. Tim Andrews on behalf of Americans for Tax Reform. This is a fundamental question of what science and evidence shows, what works and what doesn't. And unfortunately, despite some of the misleading comments made by certain people, the evidence is overwhelming. E-cigarettes are the most effective quit-smoking tool developed in the last two decades. This isn't coming from me. This is analysis done by hundreds of studies. Public Health England, part of the UK government, looked at hundreds of studies, and they determined vaping is 95% safer than smoking. Royal College of Physicians performed the same meta-analysis, came with the same conclusion. The Cochrane Library, considered the gold standard of medical meta-analysis, found that with a high certainty that they are more effective than other quit-smoking rates. Georgetown University did the modeling. If a majority of US smokers switched to vaping, how many lives would be saved? They came up with a conclusion of 6.6 million lives would be saved over the next 10 years. That's 28,000 people in the state of Hawaii. This is evidence. This isn't anecdote. This isn't stories. This is what the medical research and the medical evidence shows. These are products proven to help adults quit. These are products that save lives. Of course, we need to enforce laws against youth. Of course, we need to stop youth uptake. Nobody wants youth taking up these products. But youth use has fallen by half, according to the National Youth Tobacco Survey, in the last three years. We need to strengthen enforcement against youth, but let adults quit. And in fact, the studies also show, youth don't actually care about flavors. Only 13% do. But for adults, over half of adults say this is critical for them to quit smoking. And what happened in the real world? What happened in San Francisco when they banned flavored vapes? Dr. Abigail Friedman from Yale University looked at this. It made no impact on vaping rates. It had one impact only, youth smoking rates went up. The evidence is very, very clear. The prohibition doesn't work, and in fact, has unintended side consequences in terms of criminal justice, diverting police resources, but more importantly, making more people smoke.
Thank you. That's been two minutes. If you could summarize your testimony now.
So once again, we implore you to look at the evidence, and the evidence from the medical community and not vested interest groups is very clear. These products work, harm reduction works, prohibition doesn't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nikia Taliaferro in support.
My name is Nikia Taliaferro, an alumna of Monealua High School and a former resident of Salt Lake. I'm testifying in strong support of the Keke Caucus Bill HB 551, which will comprehensively end the sale of flavored tobacco products, including menthol. As a former student in the Hawaii school system, I know firsthand that flavored tobacco use is on the rise, which is caused by big tobacco's use of flavored tobacco products, which directly impacts the appealing nature of tobacco and entices youth to smoke, specifically the use of menthol in these products, making smoking easier to start and harder to quit. And despite previous testimony, eight out of 10 kids who have ever used tobacco products started with a flavored tobacco, and that number will continue to increase if we do not pass a comprehensive approach to the youth vaping crisis. I'm confident that the committee will see the necessity of ensuring our keke are protected from the dangers of tobacco, and are determined to stop the deceptive and exploitative marketing of big tobacco. Thank you for considering a strong and comprehensive policy without exemptions, and for the committee's commitment to protecting our kids, saving lives, and advancing health equity. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the National Huca Community Association. It says in support, I think you probably mean with comments.
Yes. Good morning. My name is Reema Kauri. As mentioned, I'm with the National Huca Community Association, which represents huca, retailers, distributors, wholesalers, and lounges. And we also represent the people who are minority owners of these businesses. Oftentimes, they're Middle Eastern, Persian, Armenian, North African, and Indian. And I want to really point out that our organization supports reasonable regulations that prevent youth access and usage of tobacco products. We worked diligently with the state of California to pass a flavored tobacco ban throughout the state, but that also exempted products such as huca that are not typically used by youth. And I want to explain that. According to the CDC and the FDA, youth usage of huca tobacco products is somewhere around 1%, and that number has been dropping for the past 10 years. So, you know, there's a reason why kids don't traditionally, or you know, don't use huca. Huca's are typically three feet tall. They're very cumbersome and hard to conceal in your backpack or wallet or pocket. They take about 20 to 30 minutes to heat up. You need an external heat source and water, and they're expensive. You know, I have a huca. I'm Palestinian-American, and my huca is about $700. This is a revered tradition. It's been around for nearly 1,000 years. It's a centerpiece for social engagement and celebratory events. It's often offered as a sign of hospitality and respect, as it had been hundreds of years ago. But what a lot of people don't realize is, is huca tobacco is inherently flavored. It's made with molasses and honey and dried fruit, so it has a distinguishing characteristic flavor. So it has become no doubt an unintended consequence in these broad flavored tobacco bans, even though the statistics from the FDA and CDC, which are reliable sources, show that it is not an issue with usage. So, our position is this. Please understand.
Two minutes. If you could summarize your testimony, please.
I will do. Please just understand the difference between huca and vape. We support strict regulation that prevents youth access and usage, and we want, as an organization, to work with lawmakers to help them understand that, so that this rich cultural tradition does not get eliminated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the testifiers I have on my list, but I understand there may be a few more here to testify on this measure. Anyone else here to testify on this measure? Both here or online?
One on Zoom.
Okay. We'll hear the in-person one first.
Honorable Chair Scott Matayoshi, Honorable Vice Chair Andrew Garrett, and all the members of Labor and Governmental Operations. My name is Hemakelahu Nui Kayama Watson, and I am a senior at Holakumana PCS, and I stand here today to testify in strong support of this bill. 31% of high school students in Hawaii vape. This is according to a 2019 survey report from the State Department of Health. This number is higher for our other islands. In Hawaii, Kauai, and Maui, it's close to about 36% of high school students who vape regularly. At the middle school level, about 18% of students say they also vape on a regular basis, and that number again is higher for our neighboring islands. This is all voluntary information. My school, like every other school in this paeina, has had a vaping problem. It's been the butt of my friends' jokes, the source of my frustration, and a point of sadness in my life. Seniors in my school, like myself, take care of the lower grades and organize the school. Because we're in contact with everyone and care about others, it doesn't feel good knowing that students as low as 7th grade, 12- and 13-year-olds are vaping regularly. It doesn't feel good knowing that people are hiding their vapes, lying to teachers, and abusing our campus so they can get a hit or a high. And I know it's not their fault, but it also doesn't feel good knowing a friend that promised me they wouldn't touch it gets offered one and gets hooked. I don't hate them for it, but I wish I never had to worry about it. I know this isn't an end-all-be-all bill, but we need something, and I don't want nothing, right? I testify in strong support of House Bill 551, and I ask that all other members do so as well. Makalamanao. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else here in person to testify? If not, we'll turn to Zoom.
Hello Chair, members of the committee. Thank you so much for allowing me to testify. My name is Guy Bentley. I'm Director of Consumer Freedom at the Reason Foundation, and we're a nonprofit public policy think tank. And we support the intentions behind this measure to limit tobacco use, especially amongst youth, but there are some challenges with the legislation, as sweeping as it is, for the promotion of public health. The Food and Drug Administration does recognize a continuum of risk when it comes to tobacco products, with cigarettes being the most dangerous and other alternatives, such as e-cigarettes and nicotine pouches, being less dangerous. As such, when FDA authorizes a new product, it has to be, quote, "appropriate for the protection of public health," unquote. And the legislation as written would ban the sale of several products that the FDA has deemed to be net beneficial to public health. To give you a very specific example, Swedish Matchets flavored General Snus products have also obtained modified risk marketing orders from the FDA. And what that allows the company to do is inform smokers about the benefits of switching from cigarettes to these products. According to the FDA, quote, "The claim using General Snus instead of cigarettes puts you at a lower risk of mouth cancer, heart disease, lung cancer, stroke, emphysema, and chronic bronchitis is scientifically accurate," unquote. So if Hawaii did choose to ban these products, it would ban products that the FDA has found to reduce the harm and risks of tobacco-related diseases and benefit public health, which I'm sure is not the intention of the legislation. Thank you so much for your time, and happy to answer any question on the specifics of that, but you also have my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have one more very adorable testifier here in person today.
Sorry. Jonathan Ching for Kaiser Permanente. I first apologize. My sitter is getting a colonoscopy, so I got a double duty. You know, I just wanted to, so testifying in strong support of HB 551. You know, we want to thank, you know, the Chair and all of the members who took the, I guess we would say had the fortitude to reintroduce this bill in light of what happened last year. Kaiser Permanente is in strong support of this. We see this, I guess you could say, ending the sale of flavored tobacco as a public health issue, and we really just wanted to thank the coalition and all the partners for continuing to push this issue. I think the last thing I'll add is, you know, I grew up in a time where there was an introduction of flavored cigarettes, and now that I have a little one, I certainly want to say that I would not want him to have that same type of advertisement and aggressive marketing that we know, and you know, that there is facts that, you know, really show that this is really aggressively targeted at our keke. So I understand there's a lot of concerns. There are some concerns by opponents, and yet, but for that, I think there's still a lot that we see that this is a really important initiative to continue to move forward. So we thank you for the consideration of this committee, and just testifying in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to testify in person or on Zoom? If not, we'll recess for decision-making. Recession. Reconvening the Committee on Labor and Government Operations. It is still Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, in Conference Room 309. We have one bill on the agenda today, HB 551, relating to health. This is the prohibition on the sale of flavored tobacco bill. Chair's recommendation is to adopt the Department of Health's amendment clarifying, inserting certain provisions in Hawaii administrative rules regarding hazardous waste and the disposal of e-cigarette devices. And we're also going to be defecting the date to June 30th, 3,000, to encourage further discussion and lacking the appropriations amount for finance and future committees. Members, any questions or comments? Yes, Rep. Tam?
Thank you, members. I'm going to vote in support of this, and I just want to make one comment. I heard a lot about harm reduction coming from those that oppose this measure. I just want to let everyone know that having worked in harm reduction, this bill in its current form does not hinder any of our progress in addressing harm reduction. In fact, the Hawaii Health Harm Reduction Center actually submitted testimony in support of the measure in its current form. Just wanted to make that one thing very clear for everyone in this room.
Yep, thank you, members. Any other questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Members are voting on House Bill 551. The Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair both vote aye. Representative Capella?
Aye.
Representative Martinez?
Aye.
Representative Sayama?
Aye.
Representative Tam?
Aye.
And Representative Alcos?
Aye.
Chair, all members vote aye. Your recommendation is adopted.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.